Go ahead. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. We have a lot of things going on. We had a sub-policy Subcommittee meeting this morning, and then we've had two executive sessions already, and we want to integrate all that and discuss it all and move ahead. So, we need to come to, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's see, I think we obviously have, we have Terry Zimmerman online, and we have Greg McKenzie trustees online, and then we have everybody else. I assume that we've confirmed that they're online. Okay, I'm getting the signal they're online. So, we've got everybody here. I asked, so we essentially have a quorum. We need to do the Pledge of Allegiance next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, I'll just check these off to see if we can be, get through everything. Message from the Chair. I just wanted to say something. I've thought about this for a while, so I'll just read my statement here. I think, let's see what you think. I have some comments to make. I've been involved with the school for two years and on the Board for almost a year now. I'm pretty impressed. I will summarize the efforts occurring at North Idaho College as people helping people. A lot of the faculty and the staff and the administration are people-people, and they're trying to help other people, and I'm pretty impressed with that. So, when you boil it down, people helping people is really what happens here, if you summarize it. We have Head Start, elder care, general education, training of all types of technical people who then go on to the community and help others. We help people to get GEDs to improve their lives. We supply a helping hand to people who otherwise would not get a good start in life. If I were ever going to go into detail about the great things I have seen, we would be here all night. In my tours throughout the college, I have found that the staff, students, faculty, and administration are working hard. I just wanted to express my thanks to administration, faculty, and staff for the great work you do here for the school and the community. Okay, we're now ready for public comment. We'll see if we can do that. I've got a lot of things going on here. I have a list, we have a list of seven people. Karen? On Board Governance. Go ahead.
Let's start with happy anniversary. It's been a year. A year ago today, I was standing over in Schuler Hall because we had an issue with Board Governance. Unfortunately, I've been told that it's a problem we still have, and people are tired of hearing me. Well, if you're tired of hearing me, it's really easy to fix. Fix Board Governance. There's five people on the Board who said you are the best qualified to do the job, and we gave you the job. We, the people of this community, and you are answerable to us, the people of this community. And a year later, we find that you are still not doing your job. So, we expect immediate and sustained improvement. Mr. Chair, your statements this evening, I applaud 100 percent. That shows the right direction. We're looking to you to lead this Board to get NWCCU accreditation taken care of. Immediate and sustained improvement. Any trustee that wants to continue to act in an illegal manner, or even the whiff of an illegal manner, will be excised like a cancer from this Board come November. Because individual trustees are no longer worth my time and effort, but this college absolutely is. This is still my green dot, and if you can't follow the law, and if you want to use prior experience of people doing things that were illegal as an excuse to continue to do illegal things, I will personally make sure you're not on this Board come November. If I have to spend my own money to do it, you will be gone. Follow policy. Follow law. Do what you promised, or get out now.
Thank you. Robert Schepler.
My name's Robert Schepler, and I'd like to talk about the accreditation and legal issues we're dealing with at the college. The NWCCU, in their October letter, stated that the professional staff at the school, the staff, the faculty, the administration, are doing their job in an excellent manner. It's been stated multiple times now since their original letter back in March, that the problem lies within the Board, and in their October letter, they stated that that problem still exists. Even though we've changed Board Chairman, we're still following questionable legal advice from attorney whose highlight to his career was three years ago filing an amicus brief with the Attorney General of the State of Texas, trying to disqualify the legal election in the state of Pennsylvania. You're basically following a clown car, gentlemen. This is a problem with our accreditation because we're paying multiple attorneys. We just paid out over $50,000 for another investigation to a Spokane firm, trying to still terminate Dr. Swain's contract. Contract that has been upheld in court multiple times. We still have, per the accreditation issue, another interim president who is still being paid approximately $30,000 in pay and benefits, and per the NWCCU letter, he's still on salary because once we get rid of Dr. Swain, then we'll have him under contract already, and we won't have to look for another president. This isn't progress, gentlemen. This is simply doing what you will and not the will of the people. You wasted a ton of money from taxpayers in this county. Taxpayers are extremely frustrated with it. You talk about budget and inflation and take your politics aside, you can't continue to drain the taxes of the county without making progress. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Burby? There you go. Hope I pronounced that correctly. All right.
My name is Jamie Burby, and I'd like to talk about the new business topic of the Chair's appointment as single point of contact with legal counsel. The latest decision by the Board to give the Chair blanket authority regarding legal decisions is clearly more evidence of a dysfunctional Board unwilling to work together for the interest of the college. That means the employees and the students, community, and businesses. I hope that this agenda item indicates that the three of you and your legal counsel are going to further discuss this and take seriously the input from Trustees Zimmerman and Corkle. This, I do believe, is outside of the bounds of the law, and is asking for further lawsuits like Trustee Corkle had said. Should further suits be brought forth, I hope they come from the Governor and the Attorney General and hold the three of you and the two attorneys individually responsible for the mess you've recreated and taxpayer dollar waste. The three of you have gone rogue, and it's truly shameful. The childish behaviors and sarcastic remarks from both Todd and Greg are inexcusable. Disdain the three of you have towards Trustees and Zimmerman, Trustees Zimmerman and Corkle is evident, and you're clearly showing that you are threatened by intelligence, professionalism, and common sense, and more so when it comes from a woman. It's appalling. Lastly, to Todd, I'm still waiting to hear your public apology to all the employees at NIC regarding your threatening remark at the September Board meeting where you said, "We need to do our jobs and be thankful for them." But I guess we'll have to wait until they're throwing snowballs in hell before we hear that from you.
Thank you. Mr. Gridley? You're on deck.
Thank you. I'm here to speak, thank you, speak in support of settlement of my lawsuit against the trustees and NIC. As those of you on the dais know, we had a mediation November 29th. We successfully and amicably agreed to settle the lawsuit, and I think that is going to be good. It's something that I'm pleased with, and I think it's something that's really good for the college. And I agree with Trustee Wagner. During the last year, I've gotten to know students, faculty, staff, and it is an outstanding bunch of people. It's an outstanding resource for this community, and it has been for many, many years, and hopefully will be for many, many more. The accreditation is obviously very critical, and in addition to my lawsuit, I would encourage you to look hard at settling any remaining litigation. I think there are big problems with it for the college, and I think the public, we would all be well-served by putting that behind us and looking forward, just going forward and supporting the Cardinals. So, anyway, thank you, and I strongly urge you to comply with the terms of the agreement that we agreed to and move on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gridley. Michael McGowan? Or is that Mash? No, Michael McGowan. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
So, this is about the NIC policy. One of the public commenters last month had a complaint about camera people being in the room. I looked up that policy. It's NIC 30305, and I had trouble making sense of what the complaint was there. Because as the previous Chair mentioned, NIC is already recording these events, so there's that. There's the fact that just about everybody in the room has a cellphone with a camera, and I've seen people doing this for videoing all and sundry. Apparently, the commenter had no problem with that. So, I'm just wondering what the issue is there. Intimidation and harassment was the thing that was stated. It's intimidation, harassment, or it's harassing surveillance for these people to be here. I have an idea that the reason why these people are upset about that and trying to engage censorship against these people, which is what it is, is that they're worried since these guys get all the footage of everything that goes on in the room, and these people behave in ways that are not appropriate, and they don't want that to become public. It's as simple as that. So, on the issue of civility, yes, we do need that. And public disruptions, I have to make an apology right here. I've got to take this opportunity because this has been on my mind for a while. I myself initiated disruptive behavior one time in one of these meetings, and I'm sorry for that. I won't do it again. But I will not promise this, that if some other persons initiate disruptive behavior and behave uncivilly, that I won't push back. Personal comments from the commenters, not appropriate. It should be factual, objective. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Borndahl.
My name is Dr. Teresa Borndahl, and of course, the holidays are here. Happy holidays, everyone. And that gets me thinking about tradition, and traditions, of course, define our values, and they build community. And North Idaho College, it's not always just about holidays where traditions exist. They exist here every single day. North Idaho College has an incredible tradition of student services. Cardinal Central, the service you receive there, all the way to what happens in the classroom. North Idaho College does it right, and that is so important for accreditation. The Board, of course, has a tradition of student excellence as well in celebrating that in the celebrating excellence portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity to talk about our students and the way that they grow individually, the way that they grow our community, the way that they literally change their own lives. It's so inspiring. But tonight, we're bucking tradition, and instead of celebrating student success, we're being asked to listen to Todd celebrate himself. And Todd and two other Board members, as well as two additional faculty members, went down to Las Vegas for a conference recently. It cost over $4,000 per person to attend this conference. It was more than $20,000 for the presentation that you're about to hear tonight. And this presentation made the front page of the Coeur d'Alene Press because our amazing North Idaho College comms team sent it on. It was also in the Nick Now. It was highlighted for every single faculty and student here on campus. It was also talked about in the President's Report a couple weeks ago, and Todd talked about it in his report as well. But again, tonight, we're not celebrating students. We're getting a monologue by Todd instead. So, Todd, next up on the agenda, celebrating your success. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so, that's all the public comment. Celebrating success, actually, I think we'll need to have a motion to postpone that because we've had, some of the folks aren't available.
Okay, that's fine.
And so, could I have that motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to postpone the celebrating success for the conference presentation until the January 2024 Board of Trustees regular meeting.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Terry, you're online. Or Greg?
No.
Okay, so, we go for the vote. Brad?
Yes.
Todd?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Greg?
Yet.
And I'll say aye, too. So, we'll move that to the next meeting. It was availability issue of the folks. We thought we had availability and didn't have it. So, we are now ready to go to, I think, to constituent reports. Aznick? Welcome.
Good evening, Board, members of the community. Chair Wagner, welcome. I'm happy to see you as Chair, getting a 5-0 vote for that type of position. I anticipate great things, and especially coming from your statement from both this Board meeting and executive session. I'm hopeful. So, I welcome you as Chair. Aznick had a bit of a lighter month just due to the fact that it's December, and we had finals coming up. But we still pushed forward, so we did St. Aznick. That was a success, I believe. We served over 80 children. It's just a yearly thing that the student government puts on, and I'd like to thank every single community, staff, faculty, member who contributed to the giving tree. It really meant a lot, and I could see a bunch of, you made their Christmas. Aznick once again made another successful night at the, night at the library. We checked students in, and just typical yearly stuff. The Children's Center put on a movie night, and we had a senator volunteer, as she's on the Children's Center Committee, and we got to see a lot of exciting faces. The President's Wall should be up next month. We have everything done. We just need to put in all the orders to facilities and such. I would like to personally thank the NIC Foundation for once again allowing student representation on their grants committee. And then, we did evaluations with the team, which went really well, and we're prepared for the upcoming year. And that is my report. Do we have any questions or comments?
Chair, I have a question.
Greg?
How long has it been since students have been represented on the Grants Committee?
They, they do it every single year. So, I'm just saying thank you once again for the students being able to be represented on the Foundation Grants Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, anybody else have any questions for Aznick? No, then thank you for your time, sir.
All right. Thank you all, and have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you. Faculty Assembly, go on.
Hello? John Gerdunia, Vice Chair for Faculty Assembly. I'm actually standing in place of Kathleen Miller-Green, who's out of town visiting family in New Mexico, but I'm also going to be standing in place of, for Faculty Staff Assembly Chair, who's unable to make it tonight. So, I'll be giving both reports as a substitute reporter. Anyways, I'd like to thank Chair Wagner and the Trustees, President Wayne, all of you for being here. You know, I'd like to wish you all Merry Christmas. We had our Faculty Assembly meeting this past week, and we addressed a couple of things. We, we, Kathleen provided an update to the, to the faculty on kind of where we are at with NWCCU and their final draft that was received on November 20th. We also reported that we're going, about the commission that's meeting on February 2nd, and, you know, kind of the details around that. And we addressed any questions that the faculty had as best as we could. We had no old business, but we moved on to some new business. We had faculty celebration where we had Kyle Sarit, who is an assistant professor, professor for the American Indian Studies Program, and we'd like to welcome him to, and then we also welcomed the new library, Steve Naught, new librarian, and he presented, you know, about his, his role there. We also, we discussed the listening session that the Brain Trust for the strategic planning project, and we provided the contact information if faculty had any more input for that. And then, we had one last agenda item where we discussed the actions of the last Board, but in reviewing the agenda today, we had a prepared statement, but it feels like that maybe no, and so we are going to hold off on that. So, and that's the end of my report for Faculty Assembly.
Does anyone have any questions online? Terry, any questions?
I, I am good, thank you.
All right, good. How about Greg?
No.
Okay. Brad?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Todd? Okay, and I don't have any, so I guess we move to the next section, right? You're doing double duty.
We'll move on to Steph. So, so Matthew kind of gave me a little thing to read, but essentially, you know, again, Staff Assembly, we'd like to, you know, thank Trustee Wagner and the trustees for giving this presentation. So, the Staff Assembly had their meeting on December 14th, and the Staff Assembly Ad Hoc Committee reported back to the Assembly on the recommended changes to the Staff Assembly Constitution. And then, one of the recommendations that was, that was voted on was not having the Vice Chair automatically become the Chair the next year, but actually having that chairperson be elected every year. And, and they'll have a vote for that new chair every year. And then, there was a first read, and then followed by a discussion, and then a second read is going to be scheduled in January with the staff when everybody gets back. So, and that concludes my report for Staff Assembly.
So, so we have any questions? Terry?
No, no questions, and thank you for your reports.
Okay, thank you.
Greg?
Name?
Okay.
No.
Brad, nothing? Or President Swain? Sorry.
No.
Todd? Nope. I guess there aren't any other questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
And that leaves Senate, right?
Right. Matt?
Chair Wagner, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, fellow community members. The Senate met twice in the month of December. Both meetings were conducted on December 14th. At our regular scheduled meeting, the Senate conducted first reads on three policies and four procedures, which, that were brought to us by Human Resources. These were Policy and Procedure 3.02.19, Payroll Deduction; Policy and Procedure 3.02.25, Holiday Pay; Procedure 3.02.28, Compensation for Special Assignments; Procedure 3.02.33, Reclassifications; and Policy 3.04.04, Jury Duty and Court Leave. After review and discussion, all policies and procedures were approved as written, with the exception of Procedure 3.02.33, Reclassifications. That was returned to the owner with questions from the Senate. The Senate then adjourned, and a special meeting was called to order. The only item of business on the agenda for the special meeting was to conduct second reads on all policies and procedures that had been approved in our regular scheduled meeting. Again, after some discussion, all policies and procedures were approved as written. Policies 3.02.19, Payroll Deduction; Policy 3.02.25, Holiday Pay; and Policy 3.04.04, Jury Duty and Court Leave are now ready for the Board to review. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions from anybody, Trustees or President Swain? I didn't mean to skip you.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Greg. Sorry.
How would the, what was the time lapse between the meetings for it to occur, between the special meeting and the regular meeting?
There was, we immediately adjourned our regular scheduled meeting and called to order the noticed, well-in-advance special meeting right afterwards. So, we felt, we did-
So, how was that, I mean, to people to think about the policy that for it to come up to a second read?
So, the Senate's a pretty efficient body, and we prepared two weeks in advance on these. We had HR bring the policies. We sent them out to the faculty, staff, and the students to review those, and so we were prepared to do this. One of the reasons why is we wanted to get those to the Board of Trustees so that you all would have time to go through your review process on the policies that would be in front of you. So, we were trying to be efficient so that you all could be efficient in the new year.
Chair recognizes Trustee Banducci?
Well, that does make me wonder, since HR initiated those, what is the timeline for implementation? What's, what's the goal here? Since we've, you guys were working pretty fast on that schedule. Is there, just out of curiosity, is there something that we need to fix, or is there something we're trying to do? Why this need to be kind of expedited? Is there some timeline we're trying to meet here? Like, beginning of the year with the new payroll or something, or, just out of curiosity?
Oh, I can, I can address that.
President Swain would like to make a comment, if that's all right?
So, this is part of our, just our routine review of policies, and so there, HR has the preponderance of our policies, I don't know, 35 or 40 of them, and we're supposed to do them every three years as well. And so, they've gotten behind. They didn't do any last year, and so they're just trying to catch up. There's no, there's, it's just a, they looked at some of the older policies and tried to get those queued up first.
My question still stands, though. What is the proposed effective date to implement these? Is this something that's going to go into the new fiscal year, starting on July 1st, or?
There, there's very little changes in any of them. So, the policies already exist.
Yeah, they are all minor edits, number one, and redundant, the edits were made to correct some redundancies between policy and procedure. So, they pulled some things out that were in policy that really belonged in procedure, and I think you'll see that when you, when you get to review those. There's no major changes to any of these at all.
Okay, all right.
And we're just going, I have a checklist for the year, and we're just kind of going down the checklist.
All right. That's why I was just wondering, because with the meetings, I was wondering if maybe there was something- if maybe there was something we were trying to accomplish there because of a timeline or?
Just get caught up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just getting caught up.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? I think the answer is no, so we'll move ahead to the President's Report.
Right. Okay, so, I'll go, I'll go quick. We are, we are, we now have the scheduled date for the NWCCU visit, which is the 2nd of February. So that's, we go, we go out to Seattle and meet with them eight or nine o'clock in the morning on, on February 2nd. We, I just wanted to kind of report out that one of the things that, in trying to make our meetings more efficient, Ken Burke, our ACCT consultant, let us, you know, offered up a free session on parliamentary procedure, and so we spent about 90 minutes going through a class with a really, really good parliamentarian. And I'll say, you know, my, my perspective on parliamentary procedure, you know, you've gone through the class, you've done it, you don't use it all the time, and so you forget, but it's like, man, I don't want to spend an hour and a half in a parliamentary procedure class. And then you go through it, and you think, and you realize all the stuff you'd forgotten, or maybe has changed. And so I, that was certainly the case for me, and Mike and Colton also participated as well as Suzie and Kristen. So really, really a good session, and I think we all gained a lot from that. We, our, our regular recruiting meeting, we have decided to split into three groups, so we're now, we're going to, so moving on to Enrollment Management. We're now going to have a recruiting team that actively is working on that, but then also a retention team, and finally a systems team, because over the past year, we've identified several processes that, most of them are, and I'm going to say IT-related, but they're not, I don't want to blame IT for this, they're just, we buy us a package to do a certain thing, it does that well, but it's supposed to, Package A is supposed to feed Package B, and it, and that process doesn't work so well. And so it's, it's not a function of IT doing something wrong, it's that we've got to get some, some automation to connect those dots, so that there's not, we don't ask the student who is trying to apply to stop what they're doing, go see somebody, and then reengage in the process. We want to try to make it as seamless as possible, and so that's what the Systems Group is going to work on. We had a BPA competition, Business Professionals of America. From what I gather, it's similar to what I would have, what we called DECA when I was in high school. About 100 students here participating with their, with their teachers, and they, it was public speaking, they did pitch competitions, and it was all organized by Philippe Vowell from our graphic design. Really great event, and again, we use that as a, kind of a strategic recruiting tool, handed out links so that everybody could apply to Idaho Launch and get their scholarships and move on. So really good, good competition. I think the students all enjoyed it. They, this is the first time they've been back in person since COVID, so everybody enjoyed getting together and actually doing an in-person competition here on campus. That was a really nice, nice event. Our dual credit team continues to expand efforts in the, in the high school, and I think we're going to see some, some real progress on our dual credit program in the, in the spring, and certainly in the fall. Moving on then to community stakeholder engagement, we had a really good legislative workshop on November 13th, and then I followed that up with a legislative send-off on December 7th. Both of them were well-attended by Board members, community members, and I, and I think we had a really good opportunity to engage with legislators and let them know what we're doing and what our needs were, which turns out to be very critical this time, because the first time in anybody's memory, we're not going to have an Education Week with the Legislature this year. So that, that's gone. They're going to have much shorter sessions, much more targeted. We don't even present this year, we're supposed to go down, and the, a representative from our Legislative Liaison is going to present, basically reading into the record what the plan is for us, and they'll ask us questions if they have any, but we are not presenting, as has been the case, and it'll, I think our date is tentatively scheduled for February 14th, so it's well after when it would normally be. So being able to get our legislators up to speed and have them understand what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, what's needed, I think will hopefully pay big dividends for us. Our Center for New Directions has received a lot of positive attention. You see some reporting on that in the, in the Courtland Press, where the, I think it's Christmas for all, there've been highlights almost every day, and they're highlighting people in the community that have, had kind of been down on their luck, had issues, and the Center for New Directions and other resources in the community have stepped up, and in almost every case, the folks, they don't want charity, they don't want handouts, they want an opportunity to progress, and in almost every case, they say North Idaho College is giving them that opportunity. So I, I'm really very positive about that. I had the opportunity to visit several businesses over the past month. I had not been to Buck Knives, I've, I bought them in the past, used them in the past. I did not know that their only manufacturing plant in the United States is right here in Post Falls. It's a wonderful facility, they hire a lot of NIC grads, so that's a great resource. Spent some time at Bay Shore Drilling Systems, it's an incredible facility. You know, it's one of those, they don't sell to the public, they are not flashy, but they're selling like million-dollar machines all over the world, and they're, they're being built right here, and I think that probably geographically is actually in Rathrum. Phenomenal facility, and they just do amazing work. Also got to meet with a regional construction firm, and just last week, I got a, I got a call, actually back before Thanksgiving, and finally touched base with a guy who's the CEO of Graybeard Steel, and he had, he serves on our Advisory Board for the Welding Program, has been a great supporter, but he was, he called up because he was frustrated, and he was able to share with me some of his frustrations, and we're working through, making some changes to what we do in response to, to his input. So I, I think that's, that's exactly what we're supposed to be doing. Our NIC Choral and Symphony, I have another press article, the Songs of the Season, wonderful concert. We went on matinee last Sunday, it wasn't standing room only, but the place was full. And so the, it was in Schuler Auditorium, and what impresses me, I went last year, what impresses me is that you have, we have at least three generations of people on stage. We have the, the high school, college student folks, you have people that are their parents' age, and then you have grandparents, maybe even great-grandparents, that are singing and playing instruments up on stage, and they're, they're great at it, and it, it's just really a wonderful experience to go to that. So if you didn't get to go this year, I'd encourage everyone to do it next year. We have, on the, our Request for Proposal, another one of the goals we had, our contracting pages are up to date, I've shared those, procurement page and contract page are up to date, and reflect where we are in those schedules, and the revised service, revised Continuous Professional Service Contract was reviewed by PC, and the updated version of that will be sent to the Senate in January. As far as Workforce Training Center program alignment, we continue to do, it's, a lot of folks have tried to do this, and it's, Workforce Training Center typically, their programs are distinguished by being not credit-based. So people take those programs, and at the end, you don't get a class credit, you don't get a transcript, you take a nationally certified test that says you've passed and you can do whatever it is you've been trained on. Getting those credits, getting that work to transfer into a credit program, so the students can move on to a two-year or a four-year program without redoing that work, is something that at the national level they're working on, and we're, I think, probably going to figure it out pretty quickly here and be able to do that. So, so that's something that's positive. The, you all have heard reports about this AeroTech, or sorry, Aerospace Tech Hub, the actual main center of that is going to be at a facility that's currently empty next to the airport, but focusing the efforts on that project, I think it sounds, it sounds right now like it may help us reignite at least portions of the aerospace program that was, that went away here. We still have a lot of equipment, when they found out what we had in terms of thermoplastics and, and other new materials, and our prototyping and manufacturing processes that we had that were done for the aerospace program here, is really of interest to them, because we already have it and they don't have to buy it, and so we can, we can get that up and running and maybe reignite some of that program. Also from Workforce Training Center, we had 16 students that graduated from the latest Patrol Academy, the graduation ceremony was on December 7th. It was, it was in here, and it was standing room only. I've been to about four of those graduations now, and it, the place was packed. So with only 16 graduates, there were law enforcement from all over the country, I think one of the graduates had 14 family members that were present, so it was, it was a really nice occasion, and, and I think that the law enforcement in North Idaho really appreciate the work that, that everyone does to make that happen. In terms of our CTE program alignment, which is our next goal, we're continuing efforts to expand dual credit opportunities between Parker and K-Tech. In the past, we have not recognized K-Tech as a potential for dual credit, and that's, as that program grows, they've already, K-Tech has already been reached out to by some of the other community colleges, and so we can either compete with them or lose, and so we're going to compete. Transfer program alignments, we continue to work on the advising guidelines and trying to work out all the articulation agreements. I really want to have a clean transfer and articulation page, so people can go to that page and figure out if they want to go to U of I, or ISU, or some of the other large transfer destinations, that, that those pathways are all lined up, and they can click on that and find out what's the, what are the exact classes they need to take, so they get to those destinations, and they can start as juniors, they don't have to take a couple extra classes, which sets them a year behind. So we're working through that. We also graduated 47 nurses, and, and you say, how could you do that? Your entrance is only 40. Well, we also have a program where we take LPNs and transition them to RNs, and so in the fall, both of those classes come together and graduate, so that's how we got 47. Again, almost 100% completion, and almost 100% pass the NCLEX, so that puts us on par with Elite Four Years, where that, you know, the average is probably 93%, 90% for elite institutions, four-year institutions, same test, and our students pass 100% in two years. So I, you know, our faculty are great, the program's great, and these, these students are doing it in two years, start to finish. Support for our student athletes, just if you didn't know this, our wrestling team is now ranked fifth in the United States for junior college, and I, you know, this, you know, the rankings are always kind of screwy, you never know how they exactly come out. The, the team that we just beat, Clackamas, is ranked above us, and I think we beat them twice last year. So I don't know how those rankings come out, but anyway, we're ranked fifth in the country. But we, so we still continue to have meetings with SWAC, there are some real growing pains with SWAC and trying to figure things out, and getting, working on school alignment, so it's, we can figure out better ways of traveling between schools, so that we can get the cost down for everyone. They are in the process of updating their bylaws, and it's very likely that we will be, we were approved for one year, at the last meeting, they approved us for 24, 25, but it's very likely until we become fully, fully sanctioned as a, and get off of show cause and back into good standing, they'll continue to approve us on a year-by-year basis. So, so that's ongoing. And it's, it's a high school event, but we host the, is a big tri-state wrestling tournament. I stopped by this year, and the Christensen Gym was just absolutely jam-packed. Wrestling, I don't know, I think there were eight mats going with, with students active on all of them. The stands were full with parents and coaches and other wrestlers, so it was a, it was a really good event. And again, that's a, it's a great strategic recruiting program for us and our wrestling program, and, and hats off to the coaches and, and all the staff and faculty that put that together. On the, on the topic of next goal, Academic Freedom and Free Speech, we found a guest speaker who's going to talk to faculty and staff, employees at our spring convocations to talk about the difference between academic freedom, free speech, and what the roles and responsibilities are, so that, we're looking forward to that. That'll happen during Convocation Week. And then Strategic Planning, just after last month's meeting, the Strategic Planning Company that we contracted with came and spent three days on campus, and they talked to tons of people, trying to get input from what, what does that, what do they, what does a community need from the college, what does a college want to be, talked to all the trustees, almost all the trustees, and so we're, we're looking forward to them being on track to have the big goals done by April of '24, so that we can include those major goals and allocate resources accordingly in our budgeting process. So that's all ongoing, and Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Subject to questions? Thank you. Questions? Anybody have any questions?
I don't know if I have a question as much as a comment. A lot of things going on, and there are some changes that are occurring for Education Week, and I'm sure we're going to be communicating with our legislators and our friends in the House and Senate Education Committees and on J-Fac, and certainly with our sister institutions. I think CSI's got their ear to the ground. One of the concerns I have is, especially if some of this is going to be taken out of our hands, and depending on what presentations we're going to do or not, is, it's going to be even more important that we have a good relationship with our legislators, and it's incumbent upon us to foster that. Quite frankly, historically, this college has done an extremely poor job, its leadership of cultivating those relationships. We had a workshop, and there were three things that were presented that were going to be asks of our legislators to help carry forward. And we only had seven legislators show up, and only six of those were of the 15, they're in Legislative Districts 1 through 5. The other gentleman was outside our, our five-county service area. And most of them got there, and I had them sitting on both sides of me, and even the one that, the rep that was kind of helping to coordinate it, it was unclear that they, that many of them even knew why they were there or what they were going to be presented. I didn't know, I had people asking me, and I couldn't answer the question. So it was, we didn't do a real good job of prepping that and making, making people aware of what the, what the expectation was and what they were going to encounter at that meeting. But overall, it went pretty well, the presentations went pretty well, I think the sheriff got his message out, which was good. And certainly what we're trying to do with his group out there, adjacent to the Parker Center, is a, is a very worthwhile project. But it even gets more interesting, we have a legislative send-off, and we only had four legislators show up, four out of 15, and only one brought his spouse. I was the only trustee there, one out of five. My spouse and I showed up. And I didn't really recognize a lot of folks from the foundation, I did see the chamber represented, and of course, U of I had a little bit of representation, LCSC, pretty minimal. It was an interesting event, but again, one trustee, four legislators, that's, that's really poor showing, in my opinion. And if we're going to be more and more in the hands of our legislators, especially the 15 that represent us in LDs 1 through 5, we better figure out how to make friends with them or whatever, and I'll start with that, with, we stop opposing them and calling them names, and the things that people do from up here, they're on the wrong side of the political ideology. You know, I keep hearing even public speakers, well, you're all our constituents, you're all our constituent. Well, yes and no, I guess, there's a certain point where you stop listening to people, and all they do is yell or criticize or call you names. I mean, from up there, we shouldn't be criticizing anybody individually, that's inappropriate, quite frankly. But whoever it is, whether it's Dr. Swain, or myself, or our attorney, or Board Chair, or anybody else, or Brad, or whatever, that's just a lack of civility right there all the time. And so we treat our legislators very poorly here, we're going to have another catfight here in 2024, obviously, it's, we're, it's a two-year cycle, here we go again, we've got the primaries coming in May. And then you turn around and you tell these people, you do what we want you to do, and you're supposed to carry the water for us, we tell you- We tell you what we want, but there's no mutual respect there. Most of them don't ever want to even come on this campus and there's no relationship there. And so we're really not too smart about that. So some people need to rethink that a little bit and maybe come up with some new strategies or ways to do this. You know, you've got kind of the downtown Core Lane folks within the cross fertilization between the foundation and the Rotary and the Chamber, and they don't get along with very many of our legislators too well. And that spills right over here to the college. And, and so that's fine. You guys can continue to be at odds with our legislative, you know, contingent, but more and more, they're the ones that are going to have to help us with the voice down in Boise, especially if maybe we're not doing any briefings. You know, in the past, we do the J-FAC briefing, then all the presidents get together and do the House Education, House and Senate Education Committees. Trustees are down there trying to put forward the, the college's interests with, with our legislators, you know, friendly engagement and, and conversation. Used to be, we'd have a lunch while we were down there with all of our Northern Idaho legislators. Laura Rumppler would set that up and we'd have a time to visit with them while we were down there. And there were other times we'd have engagement, office calls. Most of that's just disappeared and vanished. And we've become further and further withdrawn from the people that represent us as a college down there to help us with these budget issues. You look at Carl Bierke, he's Vice Chair of J-FAC. That's a guy you should be really friendly with. And then education in the House, we've got what, four or five members from our contingent up here on that, that committee. But we're not doing a very good job of that. And I'll, I'll leave it there and I don't need to hear anything on this, please. I'm just making a statement. And we didn't, those two events, especially the send-off, could have and should have been a lot better. So I, I hope that there's just some thought that goes into this going forward and, and some different approaches to these relationships.
Okay, thank you. President Swain, do you want to say anything?
No, I think, I'm, he's, Todd's not wrong. There are, you know, we, we, I, I think the legislative relationships over the past two or three years have, have, have been broken and, and we've got to rebuild them. And so we're, we're working on it. It's not something that happens overnight. Most of our legislators, from what I understand, are, are relatively new and this, this past year was their first year for many of them. And so they don't know that they're supposed to come on campus and we, so there's, there's just a lot of work to do on both sides.
So there's some relationship building that you've secured there.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, that's a nice answer, but it's more systemic than that. Rick McLennan was not friends with our legislators. Joe Dunlap was not friends with our legislators. Christie and Ken were a long time.
I can't, I can't fix that.
I'm just telling you, this is, this has been a long time history. That's all.
Yeah, what I would suggest is we've had some good discussions on a number of issues over the last few days. Maybe you and I could talk for an hour, get some, brainstorm some things, see how either one could help, either the board or obviously the administration. You can only do so many things. And I do want to point out that it was not, it was the folks in the legislature who cut out the meetings with the community college. It was not the community college folks requesting to not go. Okay? So it, and I, I would agree with Todd's issues about that happening and maybe we need to see what we can do to work on that. Is that all right?
Yeah. I would just like to add that I think trustees, I mean, that's kind of our skillset to engage external partners of the college. And I mean, I'm finding that legislatures are learning of meeting dates before, before trustees to reach out to legislators. So I'm glad, I'm glad we all recognize. Anyway, that's all I want to say.
And I'm just volunteering to help coordinate or help however I can so the issue gets worked. That's all. And I don't have any authority to do anything special. It would just be, and if we had to do something special, I'd have to come back to the board.
Right, right.
Okay?
Well, Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Go ahead.
As we watch how this legislative schedule plays out and how it's published, as we look through January and through early February, and I'm hearing there's some things in January and now even into February, into the mid-February, we need to watch for opportunities where if our interests are going to be carried by us or by others, then we're going to be center, along with our sister community colleges in the discussions, that I still think we're going to need as appropriate to have the staff and the trustees supporting our college down there and a physical presence. And not everybody can go, not everybody may want to go, but at some level, we're still going to have to consider that. There's a point that we need to be there, whether it's in the gallery, whether it's shaking hands, whether it's meeting with them before or after the hearing. Again, we need them to know that we care and that we're making the effort. And sometimes a little show of force goes a long way down there. In the old days, we'd get all five trustees from all four colleges and then even while we're down there, we'd usually meet and do a joint training. We'd get together, we'd go over to the ICRA building, we had staff, we had, I mean, we really used to pack these in pretty tight and then full schedule for a couple, three days and a lot was accomplished and they were very productive.
Okay, so I'm, again, volunteering to help coordinate that. We'll work with Dr. Swain and anybody else that wants to get involved and see what we could do. If I remembered correctly, President Swain, the other schools have been getting quite a bit of money and we haven't.
Yeah. They, they blamed that on accreditation for the past couple of years, accreditation status. And I think we'll have to, we'll have to see how that plays out this year. And that's, that's been part of the conversation with the, with the folks at the workshop that, when they, when they came to dinner with us. But I, you know, that, the, the changes that they have implemented are, are so dramatic, I'm not even sure the legislators have figured out how they're going to pull it all together. So I think it's, it's even more important that we reach out to them before they go.
Right, I would agree. Okay, so, yeah, I'll get, I'll get with you, I'll send you an email and we can spend some time.
Okay.
Okay? Super. Okay, so that's the end of the president's report. IT update.
So we'll have, we, we, this is one of our recurring reports. Ken, Ken Wodinsky is going to kind of give you a, a state of the, of the college in terms of, of IT, big, big overview and, and then he'll be open for questions afterwards.
Thank you, Chair Wagner, trustees, Attorney Boils, President Swain, colleagues and guests. It's my honor to stand up here and give you a high overview of our information technology department. As per most of our reports, when looking at the president's goals, IT is pretty much involved in everything you can see there. I will start with one disclaimer just for the general public audience. I've tried to keep this at a high level, but if I mention any specific vendor, service or product, you should not see that as an endorsement or advertisement for that product. It's simply the one that NAC is currently using. So don't take, if we say we're using a certain thing, it's not going to match our business or anything else. So we don't advertise or condone third party. People often ask me, what does IT do? That's a huge question. We support everything from the sprinklers to high-speed internet, everything from massive student information system databases to your desktop applications and everything from general IT accessibility to very specialized things such as our medical simulation lab. Within my department, I serve on president's cabinet and serve directly under President Swain. My department is made up of 28 full-time employees and seven part-time employees. That's divided across three different areas. Our primary area is the general user services area. We have an enterprise applications group and a network and systems team. Our service area might be a little bit eye-opening to some, but we have NIC service locations all the way from Bonners Ferry and then starting in January with the new grant, we are taking over control, remote control of the dental lab in Lewiston. Lewiston students serve in a cohort, they take NIC courses, but we have a dental lab down there. And then in our general regional area, you can see on the map that we have several different locations. The yellow dot is the area agency on aging. The blue dots represent areas that we support, the ABE-GED programs. The black dots are the Head Start locations that we support and the red dots are the primary NIC locations. No IT department would exist without computers, so I wanted to give a breakdown of our computers. Sorry, I'm right in the mic. We serve about just under 2,400 computers, 880 are for faculty and staff use. For the student lab, the majority of our computers sit in that realm of about 1,340. Of those, through the CARES and HERF fund, we were able to add 188 laptops that we let students check out. That's that digital divide of students who may not have had the electronics at home. We have 147 different classrooms equipped. That's generally your instructor podium at the front with the computer that you do the presentations. Through the CARES HERF funding, we were able to convert 61 of those 147 to the full Zoom classrooms. And we have 31 others, which are primarily just the conference room computers or specialized point-of-sale computer, computers that you'll see at, but like Emery's Restaurant. We are primarily a Windows shop, although we do support Apple. And then from a ticketing standpoint, I have my group basically ticket everything. So since we implemented the ticketing system in 2016, we're just now approaching 67,000 support tickets compared from this semester to last year. We, this semester, we have 4,841 tickets. That's an increase over last year. That's primarily due to the fact that I'll talk about a little bit later, that we implemented mandatory multi-factor authentication for students, which I'll talk about in a bit. Plus, we launched the new website and the web ticketing went there. So that kind of gives you where those extra tickets are. With our ticketing system, there's a randomized survey that's generated every third ticket and we get a low response rate on that, but it's basically, did we meet your request? And we have a 94% overall satisfaction rate on those tickets this semester. For the enterprise applications piece, I mentioned our student information system, which is about 20-ish years old. We have just under 300,000 person records in that. We serve 12 database servers that serve about 206 databases that we manage. We have over 25 what I call enterprise applications. These are cloud applications that are basically globally accessible to everyone else. So our e-learning system, our office suite, that kind of thing. We have eight custom applications that we've built. We have over almost 400 reports that we have generated over the years and we support about 120 different feed, data feeds from those databases to other systems for the data integration component. On the networking side of the house, we have over 184 routers and switches. These are the devices that control the networking between buildings and locations. 14 of those are security appliances. You may have heard the term firewall, those kind of things. We have almost 300 access points across the network for their wireless. And most of our servers live in a, in a virtual environment, so we have 15 computers that host about 226 virtual machines. That's about 200 actual servers that we support. We have over about 56 cloud systems that are integrated back to single sign-on that helps us control the authentication to our services through a single pane of glass. And for storage, we have five different arrays with a capacity of about 370 terabytes on premise and we're using about 30 terabytes of cloud storage. So overall, we manage about 400 terabytes of data. You can see there's the users and groups there, that's in our current active directory. So we have 8,365 NIC accounts that are currently active and those are managed through different With our Wi-Fi, I just wanted to show the public that we have almost full coverage of our campus. We have some difficulty on the west bank just because of the, where the dike in the road is and getting power over there. But we did complete a project this last summer for full coverage on the southern bank on the lakeside. So now you can enjoy NIC through public Wi-Fi on the beach without interruption. We also have the Cardinal Wi-Fi, which is for faculty and staff and students. And then we also use one called Edge of Rome. This is primarily that we can allow guests from other higher ed organizations using it to log in with their credentials. Plus, if we travel to their institutions, we can use our own credentials. Their general backbone is about 100 gigabytes between our main ring and we have about 20 gig connections that we're working to get to each individual building. From an internet perspective, we have two 10-gigabit providers and one single gigabit provider. So you've heard gig at home, we've got larger than that. All three of those are different companies and with different redundant paths. Because we have so many cloud systems, we don't want a case where one internet provider goes down and we can fail over to another one with no problem. From a life safety perspective, because I know the board is interested in this, we as IT support this in a lot of different ways. Our phone system has over 700 phones on it. Each, and our entire phone system is tied to E911 capabilities, which means when you call from an NIC phone, it'll give the office, the name on the phone, the office location, the building location and the floor that you're on. So that E911 emergency responders can actually find you quicker. We have over 80, we have 80 emergency beacons. These are the digital clocks that you'll see on the wall. During an emergency or an alert, these will go off with a tone and give both audio and visual alert when, when an emergency is triggered. We have over 251 electronic locks on campus. This is a ongoing phase through CARES HERF. Again, we actually replace these locks. I'm trying to get to mobile credentialing for the electronic locks is my long-term goal. We have 10 blue light phones on campus. These are the phones that you'll see on campus with the blue flashing light. When you pick up that phone, you'll automatically be connected to security. Those also have video cameras on them so they can see what your surroundings are when they respond to that. For cameras, we have 195 physical cameras on campus. 57 of those are actually used for testing centers across the three locations for NIC workforce training and Sandpoint, just for, to make sure that the academic integrity is withheld. The rest of those are security. Within those 195 devices, we actually have 300 different lenses, so we have 300 different views. So you may have one device that has three cameras in it, if you will. And then this is all tied through our emergency management system. When we trigger an alert through our emergency management system, it automatically sends voicemail, email and SMS text to everyone who's there. And then for all NIC machines that I mentioned earlier, for all those computers, we also have a desktop application that signals that alert as well. This is also available for the public. If you go to nic.edu/alert, you can sign up for these NIC emergency alerts. From a threat perspective, we talk about cybersecurity. This map is an analysis of our access logs from July to November of this year. The colored indicators are just simply color-coded by country code. So what we do is we look at all of the login attempts on our server. What you can see is that from external devices, which means devices outside of NIC's control, like your home computer, if you try to log in NIC system and you failed with the username and password, you would trigger an alert. So these are the locations. We've had over 4 million attempts between July and November. Conversely, when we look at how many people successfully logged in from their homes or from external areas, it was less than 300,000. It just gives you kind of the landscape of the whack-a-mole that we have to do with cybersecurity and one of the reasons that we're looking for support. In talking about cybersecurity, I do want to let the public and the board know that we do take a multi-layered approach to cybersecurity. We have an identity management product that we are going to be finishing up this coming semester. This helps us automate login and password reset a little bit better than we currently have. We did implement multi-factor authentication and I'll get to some of those reasons in a minute. These are like when you log into your bank account and they email you the PIN or they text you the PIN number, it's that second factor across from your username and password that helps you log in more secure to make sure it is that you that gets in there. Because like I said, 4 million attempts of password attempts, one of those could get through. If they did successfully guess it, we have the multi-factor as the, kind of the next line of defense. We increased our endpoint detection system to endpoint detection and response system. With that, we coupled that with 24/7 security monitoring from the company. So if anything happens at the computer level, computer, on a computer that during 20, any time of day, we get notified like crazy and the, the company gets notified and we can immediately respond to those threats in automated and manual ways. We also implemented data classification and protection. A lot of the new standards that I'm going to talk about in a minute, especially one of them, requires that we know where the PII, the personal identifiable information such as credit card numbers, social security numbers, bank account numbers, those kind of things, exist on our network, that we identify them and we know that they're secure and we can do that audit very quickly. That's that system that we added there. It also adds the ability to look at behaviors and automatically take action in case of something. So in a ransomware attempt, a bad actor would log into your network or your computer and start an encryption process. We have it set that if you try to encrypt on my network, I will automatically disable your account and kick you off my network. That's what these kind of systems do. We also do active scanning for vulnerabilities. These are external penetration tests that we partner with the Center for Internet Security through the Homeland Security, a CISA. And then we also run internal scans for vulnerability and patching and those kind of things. We also in October implemented a new user security training, which basically user awareness is the number one defense against any cybersecurity practice. So we have our, we are required, our employees are required to take a certain amount of training and then we also offer them a new training every single month. We also belong to several different memberships. As an EDU, we get access to different listservs and things to talk about current security threats that aren't known to the general public so that we can react to them quicker. And we also do And we also do traffic monitoring so that when you go out from an NIC computer, if you go to a known bad site, it will block you if it's known to distribute ransomware and spyware. And then coupled with all of this cybersecurity, we also have a very detailed backup and disaster recovery so that we use what's called a three-two-one-one-zero rule. We have three copies of the data on different media, one local, one remote. The remote one is off-site in the internet and it is mutable, which means that it's write-only. And we have, if we ever need to restore, it will actually do a virus scan and integrity check to make sure that there's zero recovery errors on the backup. So conversed to the old tape backup, this is a much more robust system. The reason we do that is because unknown to a lot of people, we actually have to follow a lot of different federal guidelines and standards. I'm not going to read all of them here, but the one for the board to know is that the Grimlich-Biley Act or the Consumer Safeguards Protection Act from the FTC extended their rulings, which went into effect in June two thousand and twenty-three. The Consumer Safeguards Act basically says that if you handle financial transactions, you have to cover the privacy rule, the safeguards rule, and the pretexting rule. We follow FERPA to cover the privacy rule, which means we don't disclose information about student records, those kind of things. Where they have extended this is in the safeguards rule area, which we identify a qualified individual, which is myself and my team. And then we have to perform a written risk assessment, a thorough risk assessment of any possibility for the risk, the control that we're using, and the mitigation time for it, and then the impact. We're working on the written piece of this and updating that. We kind of had that started, but we're not fully there. And then we also have to test this. We do the testing by the vulnerability scan and the penetration testing already, so we cover that mark. The Information Security Program is really the collection of policies three oh eight oh one through three oh eight oh nine, I believe, the entire IT security policies minus the accessibility one. And we have a written response plan. The pretexting provision is really that prevention for unauthorized disclosure and the identity theft. That ties to that data classification piece so that we know information, we know what's in those files if they are ever, well, they shouldn't be now, but if they are ever compromised, we know exactly what was in those files and whether we need to react or not. And then finally, in closing, Mr. Chair, I just want to give a big shout out to a few individuals from Event Services, Jay Karkoff, Jamie Marble, Tim Shanton, I believe, and then also in the back Frank Nichols, Andy Finney, Steve Smith, and Bob Gibson, who have tirelessly created these Zoom accounts for us. And I just want to give them a big my recognition and thank you. They do this on top of supporting everything else that we do, so I just wanted to recognize them for their hard work. And Merry Christmas. I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anybody?
Mr. Chair.
I'd recognize that.
Hey, Ken. Part of this IT brief almost seemed like it was part of a security brief, especially with the talking about the cameras and such. If I understood that right, a hundred and ninety-five cameras, are they under the purview of IT or are they under the purview of security? Or who's reviewing those or monitoring those?
The active monitoring is under security. Sorry, this is a bad angle.
No, I know. Sorry.
We do the setup and we monitor them to make sure they're live and that if anything goes down with the picture or anything else, we actually are the technician piece of that. The monitoring of that is campus security and the SRO.
Thank you. Now, as the tape is running on those cameras, how long is the recording for? In other words, does it overwrite after twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, or is it a week? When's the new data get overwritten?
Around two weeks. It depends on how many cameras we had. We generate one gigabit of data every second.
Okay, but how much of the campus, what percentage of the campus would you say is being covered by those cameras?
I can't say offhand.
Just curious. Ballpark? I mean, I'm kind of marveling in one sense, not to be too much a smart guy, but we had an incident here where someone was disrupting the procedures and avoiding a vote, and we can't seem to identify the person that pulled the fire alarm. But when it happened at the Congress, they got pictures of him, and it was pretty obvious. They made it pretty obvious. So I'm kind of wondering, how much coverage do we have and how much of the campus? And when things like that go on, whether it's pulling of a fire alarm or some other event that's illegal or inappropriate, how much coverage do we have and how do we see those things?
I would, a safe bet would be at least eighty percent, depending on how you define it. It's not every single square inch is obviously covered. So depending on, but if I say eighty percent and you look at this section and it's seventy percent, I don't want to give you a bad number that way.
Just, I was just looking for a ballpark. Kind of wondering what sort of coverage we had campus-wide.
We have coverage for exit and exit, but I don't know the exact details of everything.
Okay, because I mean, I would suspect things like the dorms, student wellness recreation center, stuff like that where there's students and they're vulnerable, we'd have a lot of cameras watching that in case anybody assaulted somebody or anything happened, you know, those sorts of things, and maybe other areas that aren't as much of a focus or priority. So that's why I was kind of curious overall what we were looking at.
It's a lot, and we have a lot tomorrow that we want to do. Part of the difficulty is the cost of the cameras and then being able to do that when we have the money to do them, too.
Now, with the ask that you've had, and you were one of the three presenters when we had the legislative workshop, that was mostly just for cybersecurity. Did that extend to some of these things like additional cameras and additional security issues?
It may free up money to do the other piece, but this doesn't really, this covers more the cybersecurity, not physical security.
Okay. And that's part of that consortium that you're part of now that the other, you and the other community colleges are all working together on.
The multi-layer stuff that he went through.
Yeah, that whole slide, that's really that tie-in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Brad?
No, I'm good.
Terry?
Not a question, just a comment. And thank you for the presentation. It was very, very interesting and thorough and gave me a lot of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Bibby, we had someone come in and look at the security and they were supposed to make a report. I think they did an assessment of the camera locations, and are we going to get a recommendation on our security status?
That will be, yeah, that's Alex, Alex will cover that.
Is that part of tonight's briefing or is that down the road?
Some of it, some of it will have to be done in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, because I mean, noticing where things are is.
And where they're not.
We don't want to discuss a lot of that.
You know, Mike, I didn't ask. Once he said that, I understood.
Yep.
Okay.
And the security, the physical visit hasn't occurred yet, that's.
Okay, I think that's Greg's question. Because they were supposed to do an onsite survey.
And they haven't done that yet.
Okay.
They've done a lot of policy reviews and other stuff, but they're going to come up soon and get that done. So they're behind.
Because this was kind of the lesser expanse initially of the group that's part of the state of Idaho that can be given to us at either no cost or low cost versus going out and getting a private vendor and contracting that out.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions? If not, thanks, Ken.
So at the.
Okay, yeah. Athletics Fall Sports Update. Sean?
So this being the end of the semester, want to just give a quick update on where we are with athletics. So Sean Noel, the athletic director, is going to give us a quick update on fall sports.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Wagner, fellow trustees, President Swain, Mr. Boils, colleagues, Cardinal fans, live, right? It's great to see you. Some of you paid the, you know, right up front and some of you back in the bleachers, but glad to have you here in Cardinal TV, always great. I'm going to give you some updates on the fall and some winter updates for athletic teams. Men's soccer, we had a large contingent of local student athletes. We had some really good roster numbers, and our team finished really strong at the end of the season. New head coach Brad Williams got hired really late last year, so I think, you know, what he was able to do with the team, I think, was well and look forward to good things to come next year. Women's soccer, team finished season with an appearance in the quarterfinals. Thirteen wins on the season, had six team members named to the NWA All-Star Team. So women's soccer had another great year. From that perspective, Kelsey Parsons does a great job with our women's soccer program, and I'm sure she'll continue to do that as we move forward. Women's volleyball finished runner-up at the NWA Championship, had a thirty-two-win season. AVCA, that's a volleyball coaches association where the coaches from across the country pick. We had a first-team player selected to that. Abby Beaton, six players named to the NWA All-Star Team, and our head coach Brittany Tillman was named NWA East Coach of the Year. So volleyball had an exceptional season. They were a lot of fun to watch, and the girls really bonded together. So it was a special group of young ladies. Going on to winter, men's basketball, this is their first season back in the NJCAA. And the SWAC currently have eight wins on the season, six of those against NJCAA Division One opponents. They have six returning sophomores, and they begin conference play Wednesday, January tenth here at home. So again, you guys that are live in living color, all our fans in the audience, hope to see you there on Wednesday, January tenth. We do have a men's basketball tournament, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth of December, which you're more than welcome to come to as well. Women's basketball update, again, first season back. They actually have seven wins on the season. They got a win today, four of those against NJCAA Division One opponents. They have four returning sophomores. And the same thing, you'll notice, conference play, they're usually double headers. So their first conference game is Wednesday, January tenth as well at home. Again, hopefully we'll see you there to support the ladies. Men's wrestling, as Dr. Swain mentioned a little bit, they currently have seven dual wins on the season. They defeated Clackamas twenty-one-twenty at Clackamas. That was a huge win. Clackamas is number four in the country. We were number five in the country, like Dr. Swain said. You know, there's a lot of different things. There's some coaches on these committees. But yeah, that was a big win for us. That's our rival, and we'll face them back here on Friday, the nineteenth. We have eight individual wrestlers ranked in the top ten of their respective weight class, which is great. And our home meets that we have for the spring semester are on Thursday, the seventeenth, and on Friday, the nineteenth, both at six PM. Again, hope to see you there. Going back quick to wrestling, like Dr. Swain said, Tri-State, I don't want to beat that anymore. Five hundred and seventy-six individual wrestlers from approximately sixty high schools from across kind of, I'll say, the Tri-State Northwest area here. You know, you put parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, and friends. Like Dr. Swain said, it's a busy place. It's a blessing and a disguise, but it's really a great way to get students and people here on campus to see our campus. It's beautiful, and we hear that a lot. People love having Tri-State here. This was the fifty-second year that we hosted that, so it really is a great event. Kudos to wrestling coaches, facilities, IT. And I'm sure there's a ton of other people, but a lot goes into it behind the scenes. So thanks for that support. And just a quick little housekeeping, final grades were just posted. We had a hundred and twenty-three student athletes had a three-point-oh GPA higher for the fall twenty-twenty-three semester.
That's out of a hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah.
So that's a good percentage.
Yeah, good percentage. Sixteen have a four-point-zero GPA of those, a hundred and twenty-three. The Student Athlete Advisory Committee, known as SAC, and our student athletes organized and participated in a beach cleanup. You see a picture up there in October. We just completed a Toys for Tots drive, a clothing drive. They've been going out, a few of the teams reading to the local elementary schoolchildren in the area. They've been doing something called Afternoon Adventure Crafts at Witten Elementary School. And wrestling handed out turkeys to those in need alongside the core group of CDA. So it's great to see not only them being successful on the court, but also in the classroom and also doing some things for our community, which is important as well. So that concludes the report. Chair Wagner, any questions from your group?
Go ahead.
I might have a question in a second, but a couple of comments, but help me with my facts, because I know some people are wondering about our move to the new NJCAA conference at the SWAC. If we can't win here, how can we compete there? Let me caveat real quick. Our ladies had an amazing season. They were thirty-two and two, and the team they lost to was both their losses, and that's the team that won the NWA, and they went undefeated this year at thirty-five and oh. And I think they were more than capable to be competing at the next level. So the team that they did lose to was a tremendous team. So our top couple of teams out of the NWA could have competed at that next level, I think, quite readily. So I think our volleyball team is well-prepared for their move next year into the new conference. They did really well this year. It just was Lynn Benton, I think, was the team?
Yeah, Lynn Benton, correct, yeah. Congratulations to them, I believe, without looking at sixty-some game win streak. So yeah, they've been successful.
They're pretty impressive. One of the things I'll use this as a platform for today is a little bit of an advertisement or a plea, maybe. John, you can give some context to this, but the Booster Club has kind of gone defunct. If you're a basketball fan, you know, we used to have the events at halftime in the women's and men's games with the Booster Room. We have money in the checkbook, and we used to have a pretty active Booster Club with fundraisers, and at one time, they even ran the concession booth. We've run out of community people that are engaged. Would be nice is if somebody wants to be involved with that. I'd love to see men's basketball, women's basketball, men's wrestling, all come up with at least a couple people that are enthusiastic that could be on the board. The board, last I understood, was down to one or two people, and pretty much there's been no meetings for a couple months, and I'm not even sure where the checkbook is at this point. So it's kind of an interesting situation. So if you're a Booster Club fan and you want to, and you want to be involved, there's a real opportunity right now. Anybody steps up and says, I'd like to help, I don't think you're going to get turned away. So let me put this out there to anybody that's listening or anybody that knows anybody that's listening. If you want to help with Cardinal Athletics, there's a real opportunity. You want to be on the board, you've got a good shot at it. So spread that word, because we could use that support. I'm sure, I know Sean could use that support, because right now it's falling on Sean to do a lot of things that historically the Booster Club has helped with as far as organizational activities and just game management times. So.
Oh, thank you. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM. Meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM, and I have the checkbook, so it's in good hands. But yes, I understand.
Is that an open meeting or just a board meeting? Or where's that at? Or can people come if they're interested?
Sure, people can come, you know what I mean, and listen what they have to say.
Quarter Lane Inn still?
No, we're actually doing it here. We're going to downstairs, just by the fireplace, I call it.
Okay, so tomorrow morning, eight AM here at the sub.
Yep.
You want to be involved with the Booster Club, all right? And I'll give you one quick thing for wrestling, since I used to be a wrestling coach. Wrestling is a different sport in how they do the rankings. In basketball, it's head-to-head, football, it's head-to-head, or how they think. Wrestling, because the way the scoring is for the team results, it's actually how would you do in a tournament, not how you would do head-to-head. So we may beat Clackamas head-to-head, but if they think that Clackamas has more higher-ranked wrestlers that at the national tournament will score more points in the tournament based on their placing, then Clackamas is ahead of us. So if you've got two or three guys that are going to win national championships and everybody else is okay, but you lose the duel to NIC, but we barely beat everybody, but we lost those three to those hammers, but we may not have guys that place high at the nationals, those three guys will get a lot more points for Clackamas than we would. I just use that as an example. I don't know that's the situation. So it's a different way that they look at that when they rank wrestling. So it's a matter of how high are you guys going to place in the tournaments? So a little different. Sean, thank you for what you're doing. Anything else for trying to get people out to help?
Yeah, come on out and help. Thank you for your support. Thank you all for your support, and yeah, we'll see you out there the other end of December or next semester, so.
One last thing, sir. And a thought, open, but for everybody that's listening, what are the ways that we can be aware or how are we advertising or putting out to make sure everybody knows when our home contests are? I've had some people asking me, where else should we be looking to be aware of what's coming up? We talked a little bit tonight, but where are we putting those out in our different places?
The easiest place to look and the most updated is nicathletics.com. Right, so if there's a schedule change or something posted, that's immediate. All the coaches have been asked, and they've done a really good job this semester of after their game to call the Quarter Lane Press and make sure something's in the paper, and we've done a really good job of that. We're not always front page, but because we've been consistent, they've given us some nice coverage, especially on the front page with a picture. Kudos to your team there, Mr. Green and Gary and Ellie and that crew. You know, they've helped out a lot with taking pictures and being there at a lot of the games. That would be it. And then I know Dr. Swain and I talked and briefly talked with Tom. We're going to try to get out some advertisement here for the SWAC for the upcoming basketball season. So try to get some kind of advertisement out for that as well, so.
That'd be great. I know Jason Elliott's sent a couple of nice articles this year, so appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Security.
So Alex is going to give a quick update on security. The folks that are helping us out on this are running a little behind, but they've done some work and Alex will give us a quick update on that.
Chair Wagner, trustees, Dr. Swain, Mr. Boils, thanks for having me tonight. As Dr. Swain said, while not fully completed yet, we have dug deep into our security audit. I would say the physical visit is probably the last. The devil is in the details, as they say, and we're making progress. One update I can give you, you know, so we know some of the recommendations that will come out of that and actually started work on one of those this week. And that is, we identified that some classrooms during the remodel, which don't meet the standards of best practice in regards to how to secure them. We're able to meet with facilities and others to put in motion a plan to make upgrades and also have a temporary fix in place for this upcoming semester while we're waiting for the hardware to arrive and be installed. So that's just an example. It's something that came up that we were able to figure out and address before the report is done. And I can tell you, yes, surveillance is part of the audit. So that's the update I have. Hope to bring you more of those updates, hope to get it finished. It's been a lot bigger project on my end than I anticipated, but I want to believe that's because we're doing a pretty thorough job. Any questions?
So it should be done by the, I mean, it should have been done in November, but delays, but by January, board meeting, and we are hoping to have a full report.
I'm going to stop making promises because of the, but we are working hard.
And once it's complete, I think we'll have to have an executive session to give everybody the detailed update.
I think that would be best to be able to go through it thoroughly in an exec session.
Any other questions? Anybody online with questions? No, thank you. And Legislative Affairs?
So as noted, we're working on our legislative processes and trying to rebuild some of those relationships. And Tom's just going to give you a quick update on where we are with that.
Thank you, President Swain. Greens, Chair Wagner, trustees, NIC community, thank you for allowing me to report tonight on our Legislative Affairs efforts. This first slide shows an org chart from my department, of which government relations, of course, is a part of. I talked about departments' org chart at our last meeting, so I won't go into that in depth this time. Going chronologically, on November 13th, we held the Legislative Workshop that was talked about earlier over dinner in Meyer Building. This is an event that has not been held in many years. I don't know how many years, but I think over 10. We thought it'd be prudent to bring this workshop back out of retirement for the very purpose of getting an opportunity to get to know our North Idaho legislators and give them the opportunity to experience our campus. It also gave us some good one-on-one time with our legislators where we could provide information on the top three requests for support we're asking for this legislative session. Next was the Legislative Send-Off. Again, this is an opportunity to garner support from North Idaho legislators as well as showcase partnerships with colleges like LCSE and UI. And finally, earlier this week was the first committee meeting for next year's North Idaho Legislative Tour. This is a tour that we did not participate in last year, but again, we believe it's important to restart that effort, which had fallen off. The tour will be held next November. And this is a big tour where we actually bring up the Southern Idaho legislators to come see our campus.
Everybody, like all the legislators come here for
Bring them up here.
A tour of North Idaho. So that's, it's a big deal and that's why he started it this December, but it'll actually take place.
It takes a year to plan, yes.
Next December.
Absolutely. And we didn't do it last year, but we need to get it going again. So these are our three main goals this legislative session. The first is a funding request for a post-regional training center with emergency vehicle operations course, or short, you'll hear people say EVOC. 10 North Idaho counties currently rely on NSC to train law enforcement, but the facility is inadequate and has safety concerns. They actually have to share their space with incoming and outgoing airplanes. Having an EVOC is required by state law as part of the training, and so we want to make sure it's safe for them. The proposal is to build a new training center, an EVOC track next to the Parker Center in Rathrum. The center won't be used just for law enforcement, but it'll be used for firefighters and EMTs for their training as well. The second request is for cybersecurity support. Cyber attacks from both foreign and domestic sources are increasingly attacking schools to steal information from students and employees. NIC is looking for extra funding to fortify cybersecurity and keep that information safe. Funding would be used to carry out a comprehensive strategy that includes automating threat responses, 24/7 monitoring, regular external audits, and extensive employee training. Our final ask is to secure additional funding to address the shortage of healthcare workers in the region. The shortage is exacerbated by graduates who leave for higher-paying salaries in the industry, hindering NIC's ability to be competitive when hiring instructors. Our request would allow NIC to expand programs in order to increase the number of graduates from our very esteemed, truly stellar healthcare division. With that, I stand for questions.
I have one to just show a little more detail anyway. On the, like the nursing funding, if I remember correctly, we're graduating about 96 a year, 48 a semester?
Forty.
Forty?
Traditionally, this semester was big, but normally it's 40 a semester.
And then you're, you're going to, if you get the additional funding, you can have another 40, was that correct?
Another 20.
Another 20.
So 20 per semester. So we go from 40 a semester to 60, which will give us a
Yeah, 40 a year.
Yeah, another 40 a year, yeah.
I remember that.
Correct.
So obviously with the great shortage of folks, health professionals in the area, it would be really good if we could get that.
Yep.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, nothing else? No other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're down to consent agenda. Let's see, so I think the process
Chair?
Go ahead, Chair McKenzie.
I'll postpone one more meeting off the consent agenda. I requested some board documents for the unapproved minutes and I have not received them yet. And I would just like the scheduled meeting and have my half-minute booked. So if all the minutes off the consent agenda could be taken off and just a head start remand everyone.
Okay, let's see, I guess we'd have to have a motion to take it off, right? So you do want to make that motion?
To postpone.
To postpone it till next time?
Yeah, to allow secretary to have input, still moved, yes, please.
Is that, can I clarify, is that tabs one through four?
Hold on, let me look.
Okay, so I assume it's not five?
Okay, so tabs one through four. So five is the head start scope, so that stays, okay.
So I have a motion, a second? Anybody want a second?
I'll second it for at least discussion.
Right, okay.
Oh, I guess we don't discuss on this, do we?
Not really.
Not to postpone.
It's postponed.
We're just, and what, we haven't done postpone much and in the, just for explanation for folks sitting in the audience, postpone is a type of motion that says, we're going to, we can't consider it right now for some reason, so what we're going to do is we're going to consider the next meeting. And so basically, Chair, trustee McKenzie is saying he didn't get all the information he needed, but obviously we still want to do this, so we'll postpone it to the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, so for explanation, it'd be fair to say that a postpone is just till the next meeting, whereas if we were to table it, table could be one meeting, two meetings, or indefinite. So there's a slight difference between a table and a postpone.
Table was one of the, in our class, if you
Right.
Be recognized, the table is one of the most misused motions. And so it is not that. And I think rather than try to explain it, I think it's better to, we'll give you the packet and, but table is not as appropriate as we have used in the past, so.
How we've used it, I understand.
So we learned that.
Yeah, the class was very interesting. Just to give you some information very briefly, Association for Computer, excuse me, Computer, Association for Community College Trustees brought their parliamentarian and gave us an hour and a half test, or test, session, and we learned a lot, let's put it that way. Okay?
Here's the confusion of that. We codified that and made that the rule, that we were going to follow Robert's Rules of Order. And then when the temporary trustees got in power, they undid that. It's amazing how the rules are the rules unless you can't weaponize them or use them to your advantage, and when they're not convenient, you get rid of them. So we started where we didn't have Robert's Rules of Order being the standard, till we made them the standard, till now they're not the standard. So actually what now we have is kind of whatever we want, using that as a general guide. And it really comes down to you, sir, as the board chair, to your discretion and your judgment.
Well, that's not exactly true, because that issue came up and I went back to the YouTube video for the May 2022 session and Chair Wald said, well, do we really want to have, use Robert's Rules of Order? There's a lot of work and overhead to doing it. And the motion was proposed by Mark Lyons and said, no, we don't. And so the motion went to the board, it passed, and so they said guideline. And then if you, they actually went far enough to put it as a section in Policy 2.0103. And if you look, I checked there and it's still there, so we're supposed to use guidelines. And in terms of the chair, I have some authority and it's a little fuzzy right now, but they wanted someone like a parliamentarian and they had a vote for one of the trustees to be the parliamentarian, but he wouldn't vote for it, so it was four to one. And that's Greg McKenzie.
Well, and Mr. Chair, we were trying to get an outside parliamentarian and that got shut down. The vote itself was a 3-2 vote, because a couple of trustees didn't think it was a great idea to dump the Robert's Rules of Orders that we had established.
But where we are right now is guidelines, we're going to do pretty much what we've done. And then if we really need to change it and put the effort in, we're going to have to go through and work a process. Okay, I don't think anybody's really interested, from what I hear, going back to it.
Yeah, that's actually not a rule either. That limits debate, requires a 2/3.
Well, yeah, because there was a snarky email about that to the author of that. She misunderstood too, and then she said all that, she says, well, I don't even know what you guys are doing or if you have it or not. And it's like, well, if you've been following this as closely as you appear to be, you should know.
I think we're going to, oh, let's go.
Yeah, okay, so I think Greg is, trustee McKenzie is concerned about time and we're all concerned, and we've made our point anyway, so. So Brad, you want to?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Todd? Greg?
Yes, the table allows secretary input.
Postpone it. Okay, and then Terry?
Yes.
Okay, and I would say yes, so we're there. So we still have
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda that comprises just tab five at this time.
Right, that's the head start scope and there's a legal reason to do that, so we need to move ahead with that. And they need someone to
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, any other discussion on that? Thank you, Brad. Okay, go ahead and vote then. Motion is to go ahead and approve the head start scope.
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda, thank you. Brad?
Yes. Todd, yes.
Terry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll vote yes, so we're supposed to actually say the count, and the count's five to zero and it's approved. Okay? So I'll be working on that some more, too. New business, okay? There were some, there's some legal issues going on, we need a point of contact. Some folks thought it was too broad, so I'm going to turn it over to Colton to talk about it. And have we sent emails to the folks online?
Send it right now.
Okay, sending it right now. So what this is, is an attempt to be much more specific about what, it points the chair as a point of contact to keep the legislation going, but it does not give like blanket authority. It says the chair could do this and the chair cannot do this. So it's much more specific. And then when, for the things the chair can't do, like major things, then what it does is say that the board has to make approval. So it doesn't take away the board's authority, it just day-to-day stuff that needs to occur on a very timely fashion, the board is the point of contact. Okay, so hopefully, as we look at this, and I'm, we spent quite a bit of time here today, but do we need a five or 10-minute recess for you guys to go through this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I recognize, for, board recognizes, chairman recognizes Todd.
Okay, so we have the resolution here and then we were going to, based on the executive session discussion, then for the next two action items, we'll just say, we make the motion for as discussed and approved in executive session?
Yeah, that's a different topic.
Yeah, that's for the next two then.
Yeah, that's the next two. So this one is just because we have things going on. For example, in one thing, there's a, some documentation that has to be turned over to the court on Friday. And so the attorneys need some time to put that together. And then there's another hearing from that, that information on the 29th. So we need to keep the process moving, we need to get these issues resolved, and it seems the best way to do that is to have me be as the chair, it's not me as the person, but the role, keep working those issues, but only certain parts of it, just enough to keep it going. Anything that is like a settlement or anything like that, all would have to come back to the board, like anything with money in it, for example. Okay, so we're trying to find a path through the center and council has worked on it with other council, and this seems to be the best alternative we have here. So what do we need to do to do discussion? Do you need, Brad? Trustee Quirco, do you need some, shall we have a recess for you to have an opportunity to look through it or?
No, I'd like to hear Colton Boils.
I think that's an excellent idea. Colton, could you give a summary of what's there and then answer questions?
I just want to be clear, in the advent that like the chair becomes incapacitated or some negative event happens, is there like, then I dig it, the vice chair would take over these responsibilities? Just ask for a little bit
Right, if you look at the section that justifies from a policy standpoint and a law standpoint, what can be done, it says the chair can delegate certain activities to the vice chair.
With permission of the chair.
Go ahead.
Trustee McKenzie, there's already a NIC policy that allows the vice chair to step in in the event of the chairman's absence. I think that would be applicable here. What this resolution does is attempt to clarify the three prior motions that we had from March 22nd, May 17, and December 13. So it amends and supersedes those resolutions. It allows the chair to work with the president to communicate and direct counsel to the extent that the board has given them authorization. And it does, it prohibits the chair from making settlement decisions, whether monetary or non-monetary, without prior authorization of the board. And it places certain limitations on, on how we appoint people in the event of a conflict. So if I have a conflict or President Swain has a conflict, then the vice chair vice chair and the other counsel would take over at that point. So it's an attempt to resolve the concerns related to the overbroad delegation. We had those concerns brought to us, received a letter from Mr. Lyons, communicated with Mr. Lyons on email as well, and we're attempting to resolve and clarify any of those issues with this resolution. I think it's in line with state law, I think it's dialed in with the rules of professional conduct, the NIC policies as well. And I certainly think it's an improvement for how the board operates when it discusses legal matters and directs counsel and provides increased transparency.
All right. So do.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go, you have the floor?
Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Mr. Boils, would it also be fair to say that this agreement helps to satisfy any desires that our other legal counsel have about just how they're receiving input from us and direction, and who they're coordinating with, and that sort of thing? That be a fair statement?
I interpret that to be a question regarding how the board directs panel counsel. Yes, this resolution sets forth that the point of contact, if approved, would be the chair. Will work in consultation with general counsel and the president, unless they have a conflict, to do certain things. There's a grant of authority, which is a very limited grant, and then there are prohibitions. Some of the prohibitions are initiating litigation, hiring and firing, legal counsel, other professionals, settling claims or matters, expending college funds, or agreeing to non-monetary terms. So it, it limits the chair to make unanimous or independent legal decisions, other than what an attorney would typically do, which would be like a scheduling or tactical matter, and those come up quite routinely. So there's no reason to have counsel request a board meeting every time they want to schedule when a briefing is due, or grant an extension to the opposing counsel. So the board would say, here's the way we want to proceed, here's the means we want you to pursue, and then within that limited grant of authority, the chair and the president could work together with counsel to just keep the ball ruling.
Right, so, so again, the objective is not to put a bunch of power with the board chair. The objective is to keep things going, and all the little things that need to go on, and then, so we don't have to have all these special meetings, et cetera, or as many. But then when we get to the point where major decisions and commitments are made, then the board chair has to call a meeting, and the board of trustees has to make a decision as, in executive session, for example, whatever is appropriate.
I would just.
Go ahead.
I would say, they would be briefed and come to consensus in executive session and make a decision in public session.
Exactly. That's the standard process. And just to reinforce, in case people don't understand, the board chair will not make the decisions generally alone. In most cases, I'd be working with President Swain, because obviously he'd be affected, and it's not good to have one person just make the decision anyway. It needs to have various perspectives. So the only time that would not occur is if the president had a conflict, and we can't possibly do that. And then, or if the pres, if the board chair has a conflict, then the vice chair does it for him. Okay, so we think we've covered all the exceptions, and we're not giving the chair, board chair, too much authority, just enough to get things done on a day-to-day basis.
Mr. Chairman?
That's the objective. Go ahead.
Just for a point of clarity, and my lack of legal acumen, can you, can somebody give me an example of what kind of action the chair might take in a legal situation?
Do you want to answer that question?
Sure. Trustee Corkle, this resolution sets forth that the point of contact and consultation with the general counsel and the president, and subject to any further or subsequent limitation or grant of authority from the board, can do certain things. They include diligently communicating the will of the board to counsel, having authority to communicate with counsel regarding the board's purposes, conveying but not unilaterally deciding the trustees' orders regarding the expense to be incurred and concerns for third persons. In between regular or special meetings, confer with counsel to give consent on behalf of the board related to the means to be used to accomplish the college's objectives, specifically with regard to technical, technical, legal, or tactical matters, maintaining confidentiality, reporting regarding his communications or what counsel is doing to board members and the president, as appropriate in, in executive session or open session, specifically with regard to the status of legal matters when the board and/or the president may be entitled to receive that information, exercise discretionary authority over it, or give advice related to that. Work with panel counsel to timely respond to motions or pleadings pursuant to a grant of authority by the board. Cooperate with counsel to assist them with providing declarations or marshalling facts pursuant to authority by the board, and then in the event that there's a, an emergency or an unforeseen or urgent claim that the chair would, would call for a special meeting. And so this, this is really meant to respect the president's operational authority, to work with the president to resolve legal issues, and provide that in the event of a conflict, the procedure that we would handle that, and set forth the, the rules of the road on when the chair or the point of contact with legal counsel will call a special meeting to provide briefings to get board input.
So the chair and the president will be working side by side during this?
Unless there's a conflict on, on either one of their behalf.
Right. The, doing something at the board level that affects the president, and then making a decision without that input is not a good idea, just to be direct.
Chair?
Chair recognizes trustee Zimmerman?
Thank you. I, I think it's paragraph four here, I'd like to, to ask a little bit about this. It's the last part of that paragraph says, and carry out special assignments as requested by the chair. Is that entirely really necessary? This, this part does bother me somewhat. It sounds, still seems like there's a lot of giving away authority for people to go and do things when they should not be.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Zimmerman. That paragraph that states that the, it, it states here that the board vice chair shall understand the responsibilities of the chair, and be able to perform those duties upon absence of the chair, and carry out special assignments as requested by the chair, that is from the Policy 2.01.02, Roman numeral, Roman numeral two, and that's a direct quote from existing NIC policy. And so if, we can certainly remove that, but it, it doesn't expand or restrict the existing policy. And I believe this section is to allow the vice chair to step in without a delay, and just have a general understanding of what's going on in, in case of an absence or an incapacity on behalf of the chair. And, and it's not to allow for any type of open meeting law violation or a run around the board's will. It's simply, you know, vice chair needs to get a declaration in, he can request the, or the chair, he could request the vice chair to do it. It's more of an administrative provision and, and not a delegation. So.
Well, in, in, in this situation, though, I think that, I mean, my thought is that it gives a lot of broad authority to act in between meetings, and I don't think that was the intent of the policy.
I think if we added a, a phrase that said not to exceed the authority of the chair, because right, as it says now, particularly in the context of this document, that it could, and I think what she's perceiving is that it could be an end around, that, that, okay, I know I can't do it, but I'm going to give you a special assignment to go do something that I don't have the.
That's not the intent.
I know that's not the intent, but it's.
But we need to get it in there.
So I think if, if it was just clarified that way, I think that would be. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's acceptable.
Well, then I guess our policy subcommittee needs to review the policy, because if it's verbatim out of the policy, then you must have a problem with the policy itself.
But the, it's the context.
It's the context, because in the policy, yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I would refer you, though, as well to a paragraph below that where it says, an individual trustee shall not purport to act for, bind, or commit the college to any act or course of conduct without prior approval of the board. So my read of this is that whatever authority the chair has pursuant to the policy where he can make a request to the vice chair, would not expand the chair's authority. And also on the third page where we further resolve that the resolution shall not be construed as authorizing the point of contact to exercise any non-delegable authority of the board of trustees, or to exercise any presidential authority or discretion to make day-to-day operational decisions in implementing and administering the policies of the board. So I, I would certainly be okay to add that clarifying language in there, although I don't personally think it's necessary, but it's fine with me to add that.
Personally, it's a direct out of policy, and I think it's fine how it is.
Terry, would, how do you feel about that? Terry?
Sorry, it's, I have a hard, hard time unmuting myself. I think I just need a few minutes to actually read all of this. I'm reading it kind of quickly, and I, I think in fairness to, to everybody, can we call a, a little bit of a timeout here to have an opportunity to really read through it?
How long do you need? Five to ten?
I would, I, I'm out, and we just do this, because I, so.
I, I would like everyone to feel comfortable with this. It's an important thing. So let's, let's do it. Five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're in recess for five minutes?
Recession five minutes. Put my stuff away. Can we go ahead and get started again? We're, we're live again, and the time is up, and we need to keep proceeding, but we need to work the issues, too. So. You're welcome. Okay, so does anyone need to be recognized to make comments, or, at this point?
Chair Wagner, I would like to be recognized.
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. So on page two, I want to, to discuss something, and then it flows over to page three. So I'll start with page three. I, I really like the parts here where it talks about what cannot occur. So a big thumbs up to that whole section there. But on the other page where you've got the six items at the bottom, line item number four, that is contrary to what is being pointed out on page three. And so I, I don't like item number four at all, especially with regards to the words legal and tactical matters. I would prefer this whole thing be struck, but if you really feel it needs to be there, then only technical matters, but not legal and not tactical, because in. then only technical matters, but not legal and not tactical, because in that, in that section, you could actually move forward and make a settlement.
Would you like me to respond, Chair?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Trustee Zimmerman. Uh, number four reads that, that "The point of contact in consultation with general counsel and the President, and subject to any further or subsequent limitation or grant of authority of a majority of a quorum of the Board of Trustees, shall, in between regular or special meetings concerning any matter, confer with counsel on and give consent on behalf of the College for the means to be used to accomplish the College's objectives, particularly with respect to technical, legal, and tactical matters." And that, that phrase, "particularly with respect to technical, legal, and tactical matters," is pulled from the Idaho Rules of Professional Conduct Rule 1.2, and the comment to that, which sets forth what the client must do, that the attorney cannot do without the client, and then what the lawyers can do, um, kind of within their professional sphere. And so, the client is the only one that can decide to settle a matter, like in a criminal matter, only the client gets to decide if they want to testify or not. And the comments to our professional conduct rules say that attorneys can have some leeway with regard to technical, legal, and tactical matters. And so, that, that, that could be misconstrued when out of context, and I understand how this is a different context, but that phrase is specifically meant to have the meaning it does in 1.2 of the Rules of Professional Conduct, which limits the authority of the attorney to make substantive decisions, especially if they are not consistent with the objectives of the representation and the direction of the client. And so, with respect to technical, legal, and tactical matters, this would concern, when should we file a meet and confer with a, a discovery dispute? Should we give a 21-day safe harbor if we're seeking sanctions? Should we grant an extension of time and to file responsive pleadings? Those matters that typically an attorney can do without the consent of the client, that have to do with professionalism and collegiality. They're not meant in any way to expand the authority of the attorneys to act in derogation of the objectives of counsel. So, um, they are a term of art, and so I'm okay if we want to change that language, but my opinion is not that they would allow the Chair to take any of those actions that you mentioned. So I, I'm open to amend that, but I think it is a narrow phrase.
Well, I, I thank you for that, Colton. I, I'd like just to kind of restate it again, is that we're talking about here about allowing the Chair to have some leeway to make some decisions, to advance some of the things that we're doing, but not take away the, the people's right and the authority of the Board to act as a whole. So that's why I have such reservations about this. This is reminding us all that the client is the Board.
Correct.
And, and not the Chair, so that's why I have such an issue with those particular words there.
Yeah, that, that's absolutely correct, Trustee Zimmerman. And the rest of Rule 1.2 mentions language about the objectives of representation and the means by which they should be, um, accomplished. And so that, that's the Board's sole discretion, and the Board can take more of that regarding the technical, legal, and tactical matters if it wishes. It's not typical. Um, the clients typically don't want to be involved in the minutia of the scheduling. And so I'm happy to dial this back with, "at your pleasure." But I, I don't see it as an impediment, and nor would I give the legal opinion that it would allow the Chair to take an unauthorized action. And the Board could certainly limit that in a meeting and give a direct order to the point of contact.
Okay, what, what, okay, does anyone else have any comments? Brad?
Well, I'm just, I'm just going to add one more thing here, just to remember that this does talk about in-between special meetings, and so, you know, if we need to have a meeting, we need to have a meeting.
Yeah, just like you guys wanted to have a meeting the night before the March, uh, Judge Meyer, I remember. I'm tired of this, ready to vote.
Uh, th- thank you, Trustee Zimmerman, if I may, Chair?
Go ahead.
So, uh, keep in mind as well, trustees, that this resolution is conjunctive, not disjunctive, and so if you look between eight and nine, it says "and." And so I would read together the other provisions of this resolution with number four.
Can you explain that a little more?
So those would be limiting, so if, if the point of contact is diligently communicating the will of the majority of the trustees, and there's all these other limitations contained in the resolution, this is conjunctive, so I would not read number four to expand those other limitations.
Okay, Brad, do you have any comments?
I, I do, I just have one comment. We had a meeting on this last week, and we're getting this information tonight. That's a lot to digest, and it's a very important issue. And I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, uh, moving ahead on this at this time.
Okay, uh, someone has to give the attorneys direction tomorrow.
Mr. Chair? Sorry?
Trustee Bandochi.
I'm sorry, were we done there? I didn't mean to interrupt.
I, I think Brad's finished.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College to designate the Board Chair as the point of contact for legal counsel.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, further discussion?
Further discussion, I just want to say I appreciate the written statement of a plan written down. Uh, I think there's been a lot of input in, uh, thought put into this resolution, and it's taken right out of policy, so I see, um, progress, I see, I see progress, so I appreciate that, appreciate everyone's work getting there.
Right.
No, ended discussion for me.
Mr. Chair, if I may, since we have a second, we're open for discussion. One of the things that the people in the audience or online can't see is pretty much every single whereas references state law, state statute, and/or directly out of an NIC policy, e- every single one of them. It's been taken out verbatim, in context, um, per our own policies and per the state law and state statutes, so it looks pretty tight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If this is coming right out of our policy, why is this necessary?
It ties it all together, all the pieces that are, uh, through the various parts of the policies.
It does.
Do you have any further comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
No, sir.
I'd say-
President Swain?
I, I think, um, there, there are some decisions that need to be made, and I think this gives the Chair the opportunity to serve as the point of contact. It also doesn't prevent, if, if upon time to reflect, the, if the, if the other Board members come back and say, "Ha, I have a real problem," that they could come back at the next meeting, or contact you and let you know that we need to have a special meeting to resolve something that they've found in here that they really have issues with. So, so what I'm suggesting is that we can approve this tonight. It, it looks pretty solid, um, but if somebody does come up with an issue, just like with our policies, that we could come back and, and amend it again.
I'm certainly open to, uh, amending it in any way the President and the Chair and the Board see fit and appropriate.
Okay.
If, if that helps move things.
Right. I, I've, my, my impression, Trustee Corkle, is it's much tighter than we had before, but it doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement. And we do need to get something tonight.
Chair Wagner?
Yes. Trustee Zimmerman?
Thank you. If, if there's something that needs to be decided tomorrow, I mean, we're only, you know, four hours from tomorrow, why don't we, um, call executive session and go discuss whatever needs to be discussed, so that you can have some direction and some consensus?
Uh, there's, there's no way to do that with the open meeting laws at this point.
Mr. Chair?
I thought, I thought we could call a special executive session, emergency, it's, seems like that.
We have a motion on the floor, we have it seconded. This is a very detailed document, we could spend a lot of time, and we would need multiple attorneys. So I think we need to go ahead and have a vote. So, let's go ahead and do that. Would you restate your motion?
Certainly. My, my motion is essentially the title of the document. "I make a motion to accept, approve, adopt," I don't know what's the right word, how about, let's say, "I make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution of the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College to designate the Board Chair as the point of contact for legal counsel."
And to have the Chair administratively sign, and the Board Secretary to attest.
Okay. Let me restate my motion, please, I'm sorry, trying to work through this. I'm trying to get my eyes on this thing well. All right, so my motion is to adopt the resolution of the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College to designate the Board Chair as the point of contact for legal counsel, to have this signed and witnessed herof tonight by the Board Chair and by the Board Clerk.
Do we have a second?
Well, he's restating the motion, I guess.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, he asked me just to say it again.
So, it's restated, so I think we can have the vote now, so.
Greg seconded it, so yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay. Trustee Corkle?
No.
Trustee Bandochi?
Aye.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So it passes three to two. So let's move on to the next, uh, issue. Action per executive session, this, discussion gridly. We need a, uh, we discussed that in executive session, we need-
Just read your motion.
What?
You need to call for that motion, just to proceed.
So I, I need a motion?
Just where you're at. No.
You, you have a handwritten document, a motion.
Yes, I do. Hang on just a minute. No, we're almost there. This is-
You want this?
I think so.
I need a, um, I, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the Chair to proceed as directed in the executive session. Do I have a second?
Sir, say that.
Two second, okay, we'll count, uh-
Okay.
Bandochi as a second.
Is that a so moved, and then a second?
No, it's just a motion to authorize the Chair to proceed as directed.
And you made the motion?
Yes.
And Trustee McKenzie just seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion? No discussion? Uh, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Trustee Corkle?
Yes.
Trustee Bandochi?
Aye.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Okay, so I'm authorized to do something?
Now you needed to go to two, call the next agenda item.
What?
Now we move on to the next executive session, Swain two.
Okay.
That's concluded.
And then, uh, we need a motion to authorize the Chair under, this is under the second executive session, okay? Authorize the Chair to communicate with and direct panel of counsel and to proceed as directed with, uh, the Swain lawsuit. Is, I'm making that motion, is there a second?
I will second that.
All right. Discussion?
May I ask a question?
No.
Just time to vote, roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Trustees, uh, Corkle?
Yes.
Trustee Bandochi?
Aye.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, so we've gotten those two things done, we have one additional thing to do here. Right.
Uh, we're on a, you know, subcommittee war.
But I'm supposed to make a-
You can do the statement if you want, that's fine.
Yeah, I want to make the statement, so I need that statement.
Uh, okay. Give me a minute, move on to the next one, and I'll give it to you.
All right, so we're doing a little work here, so we're going to move on to, uh, we will have to come back to this, but, uh, discussion, action, board policy, subcommittee, tab six, second reading, action, policy 2.0109, and that is a, um, so I, there's a discussion, so we'll do it that way, and this is the same trust, policy we've had forever, but we want to reaffirm that. So, do we have a policy? Anyone would like to make a motion to reaffirm that policy? 2.0109, trustee emeritus status?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
So you want to reread the motion, as, per, per our parliamentary class? Reaffirm the policy?
Reaffirm policy 2.0109, trustee emeritus status, which is the same one as we've had for a long time. Okay, uh, I'll go ahead and vote, trustee Corkle?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie? Did we get an answer from trustee?
I think he said aye.
He said aye. Uh, trustee Bandochi?
Did McKenzie vote?
I think he said aye.
He said aye.
Okay, I abstain.
You abstain, and Chair votes aye, so it's four to zero, passes. So that is, by the way, in terms of end, what NWCC wanted, they wanted us to look at all of them and get them changed and approved, that's the last one. Okay, so I'll just make a little-
I abstain on that one.
Uh, make a little side comment here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, we're trying to make sure that we do everything to keep the schools and going and flourishing, we're focusing on that, and the other thing we want to focus on is address their issues, and this is the last one of those. Yeah, well, they also wanted us to have, uh, a creation revision and review process, and that's the next one here, so let's talk about that. Uh, so we're up to tab seven. Uh, and it's again the second reading, so we're ready to go with that. Can I have a motion to, uh, approve the proposed policy 2.0114, creation, revision, or elimination of internal Board governance? Just the- of internal Board governance, just the Board, governance, not college, policy and procedure? Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Trustee Zimmerman? Okay, any discussion? For the purposes or the information of the folks out here and who may be online, basically, it does exactly that. What historically we had was, we had one policy for creation and updating the policies for the schools, which is a different process for their policies and ours. So, we split it out, created our own, and then they're taking our part out of theirs. I hope I'm not speaking.
That's correct.
Okay? Or out of turn. And so, we can do all that. In addition, the policies, some of them were pretty old, so what we put in there was a schedule spread out through like, I think it was three years. And so, on a regular basis, it will just keep reviewing it and updating it and not wait till the last minute. So, it seems like a pretty good deal. Any further discussion? I think we have a, we have a second, a motion and a second. It sounds like we're ready to vote. Trustee Corkle?
The last one, I have some phone battery to, so. Policy as staggered three-year schedule or as needed, or just as initiated by a Board member. I want to just clarify the case that this policy is not, not holding back any trustee from proposing a.
That's correct.
It's not holding back any trustee from proposing changes or other policies, et cetera.
It's a three-year routine cycle, but it doesn't prevent interim.
Right. It's, the objective, trustee McKenzie, is simply to make sure reviews happening, but not prevent, on a regular basis, but not prevent anybody at any time, any trustee for coming in and proposing changes on anything at any time in the subcommittee. And by the way, it does, excuse me, I need to get closer here, sorry. It does set up a, the subcommittee as a standing committee. It doesn't say how often it has to meet. Obviously, if there's nothing to cover, we wouldn't want to waste time and meet. But it does make sure the reviews happen, and we don't get out of date like we did before, and that's something NWCCU wants. And so, this seems to be the best we can come up with it right now. But as trustee McKenzie stated, if he wants to come in and change something and work it through the subcommittee and the Board, that's fine.
Can we just modify 2.0114, just or as needed to be as optionally initiated or something like that, just clarifying?
Go ahead. Trustee Banducci?
Hey, Greg, this is Todd. On the very back page on this, Page 2, in the last full paragraph, I don't know if this is answering your question or not, or your concern. It talks about, it says, "As such, a standing committee will facilitate the Board's review of internal Board governance, policies, and procedures on a staggered three-year schedule or as needed." I'm, if I read that, I think the "or as needed" does give us the flexibility or the discretion if we want to review this on an out-of-cycle basis. If we saw something in a month.
That was the whole intent of that.
That was the intent, right?
So, I think that caveat.
Sir, refreshing my memory.
No, no worries, sir. I think that caveat gives us the latitude that if anytime we see something on this that we think we might want to improve upon, I think we can do so. And since it's just our policy, it keeps it at the Board level, it's pretty straightforward.
So, I think.
I'm giving my opinion, I'm all for it.
Okay, so are we, anybody else have any comments? Then I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.0114, creation of revision or elimination of internal Board governance, policy, and procedure as it was presented.
Sir, I think you already had a motion, I think. Trustee Corkle.
Okay.
So, the guide was to read it again before the vote, so make sure everybody knew what they were voting on, so.
Right.
So, you're restating it.
He's restating it.
Right. So, are we ready for a vote? Trustee Corkle?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie? And the Chair votes aye, so we have a new policy.
Mr. Chair, trustee Banducci votes aye also.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
It's getting late.
No worries.
So, it passes five to zero. We have a new policy, and it covers what we need to do to be efficient, effective, and keep things up to date. And it's pretty simple, straightforward, so that's good. We've got one more thing off the list of what we need to do for NWCCU, so there's two right there. Let's see here.
I think these other two, we were going to postpone.
Right, well.
Because they didn't, we didn't have them in the Board Book.
Right, let's see. We were going to have a first reading, that's right. We're going to change our process a little bit. Again, one of the things we talked about on Friday in our class was the fact that we needed to make sure we got information out to the public. And what we've been doing, at least in my opinion, was we were trying to get things through as fast as possible for NWCCU, but we talked about this morning, I believe this is correct, trustee Zimmerman and President Swain, that we've said that we would not bring these forward tonight, and we would postpone them. I would do a motion to postpone them because we want to put it in the Board Book before we vote on them, so people can look at them and make input if they need to before we have the meeting. Okay, so.
Move to postpone?
There'll be Tabs 8 and 9?
Yes.
Brad, you want to make that for both?
Move to postpone Items 8 and 9.
I second the motion to postpone Tabs 8 and 9.
Any discussion?
No, no, we're postponing, no discussion.
That's right, there's no discussion on that, on a postpone. So, that means.
Call for the vote.
That if we vote for it, then we'll automatically have it on the agenda for next time, and we'll put it in the Board Book ahead of time, a week or so, and everybody gets to look at it, which is better than what we're doing. We're trying to do continuous improvement of the Board processes. We'll take some time, but if we can do a little bit each time, that's great. Okay, so, so motion proposed, so we need the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
He's ahead of me already, he's ahead of me. Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie? I don't know if that means abstain or what, but.
Aye.
Aye. And Chair votes aye, so we've got five to zero again. Yeah, I understand. Okay, so, that's all of those. I now have, going back to where we said we would on the action per executive session discussion, CV 28227707, gridly, the Board has now authorized me to read a statement. And so, I'm going to do that, and I think you, please pay attention, this is real important. The Board of Trustees would like to announce that it has no intent to remove Dr. Swain as President of North Idaho College. That's an official position of the Board. So, we are now to remarks for the good of the order. I have one, let's see, where was that? Anyway, anybody else, anybody want to make remarks? I've got some, but I need to find my written notes here.
No.
No? Terry?
No, thank you.
Trustee McKenzie?
No, we're good.
Okay. Need to find my notes here, probably, I don't know where that is. Oh, it's in here. Okay, hang on just a minute. I do have one, and it will take me just a minute to find it, because, I thought I had one. Oh, it's right here. Of course, it's right under this big pile of paper. Okay. I talked earlier about the students, et cetera. I just want to read this other little statement. I just wanted to say I appreciate all of the hard work the Board has done and is doing to make NIC flourish again. I'm kind of, I mean, that's really a goal. I was a project manager for 16 years. We're trying to do, make NIC flourish again and grow, and resolve NWCCU concerns. So, we've done some of those tonight, and then we're going to look at what we can do from now on. I'm actually meeting with Dr. Kurtz, and we're going to try and make up a list of what we can do, and if we can bring some of those to the, possibly to the January 17th meeting, then we will do what we can there to keep reserve, doing that, so when we go to the February 2 meeting in the Seattle area, we'll be able to be in as good a shape as possible. Okay? I know all of you well enough to say you all care about the school, everybody. You may have, we may have different ways to move forward, but I am confident we all care. Thanks for all of the hard work. And with that, I think we adjourn, and everybody have a great Christmas.